Alderman Saber, you okay? I'd like to call this special city council meeting to order. Roll call of Alderman.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Consilla. Mrs. Holt.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Rudjowitz. Mr. Randall. Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Davidson. Mr. Sillsby. Mr. Hayden. Mr. Cyber.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlett. Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Okay, I know that Sillsby and Rudjowitz and Randall and Davidson all had called and said they could not make this night. I thought Ken said he was coming, but he also did tell me he was bringing his wife home today from the rehab. So, that might have thrown a glitch and, you know, so, he may still walk in, but we'll excuse him, but his wife's been in Rosewood for several weeks, so... So, and as far as department heads go, just for the meeting, I didn't ask all of them to attend, I asked Kenny Vaughn, Bob Sable, and Tim Gregowicz to be here. Those are the only three that directly pertain to 407 East Lincoln. So, with that being said, I'd ask everyone would stand... Here comes Alderman Consilla, if you please note, he is here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, ununderdogged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, I thought you told me you were gonna be here, but I also knew you said you were gonna... Let me shut my phone down before I make a noise. Okay, please remember to speak into the microphones. The meeting is still being taped, even though it's a special meeting and I don't think a real long meeting, but we... Rich is here. And Rich, I also, besides taping it, I'd ask him to be here because he's here also to, if necessary, to explain or to give us a little feedback on some of the transferring of equipment to that building as well. At this time, I will open public participation. Does anyone have any comments tonight? It's a pretty limited agenda, okay? This time, I will close. Yes, ma'am?
How many bids? I only have...
Well, we'll get to that into this here, okay? I'm closing public participation. Okay. At this time, the purpose of tonight's meeting is real simple. Explanation and update on necessary renovations for 407 East Lincoln Street to expedite the move of the Health and Housing Department and Engineering Department. Okay. As I've explained before, and Kenny Vaughn is probably gonna come forward to the microphone in just a second, and explain exactly what happened to the bid process. I... We didn't get a chance, as I told you two weeks ago, three weeks ago, to go out for the usually thirty-day bid advertising, et cetera, because of the time. First of all, we didn't know if 213 was gonna for sure close. We got down to the... And 407, we didn't know if that closing was all gonna happen. We were down to that morning, and there were still some issues back and forth, where are we gonna make it on time? So, the timeline of everything, as I did tell you in the timeline, that we had agreed upon if everything closed on time, was that we were going to do everything in our power to be out of this building by the first weekend of August. And that's why we're here tonight, we had to wait. Now Kenny, Kenny, if you'll step to the microphone, I'll start this and I'll let you take over. We went... He contacted four local contractors about this process. You all know at the last council meeting, you approved, and Josh from Lawrence Group, who we've already been working with, he's already over here at different times, did give drawings and specs to Ken, that he got to the guys basically on Friday, had to make some changes even yet on Saturday, but on Friday, so that they could... They walked through the building on Thursday. We had four people came, four contractors, came to that process, right? After the specs and everything were given, two of them decided that they just could not, what they had on their plate right now in their business, could not get this done in the timeframe we needed. And we knew it was a real short window. We're basically asking them, you know, one to two weeks to get this thing done. Two of them turned in bids. When they went through and opened things up, the one followed all the guidelines and met everything that we had hoped for. The other one immediately told Ken that, after his conversation, that he had left out...
HVAC?
HVAC and a chunk of his labor.
Yes, sir.
So, his bid was not the lowest and best bid. And so, he was... It was incomplete. He then sent a note back this afternoon, was it?
Yes, sir.
That he, because it was incomplete, he withdrew his bid. So, we ended up with the bid from Erlinger Construction, which was emailed to you. The one that ended up being incomplete was Stroob.
Stroob Construction.
Stroob Construction. The other two that...
Calhoun and Paget.
Calhoun and Paget were the other two who did the walkthroughs and everything, but as of Friday, decided that they just, with what they had on their plate, they could not meet the timeline, and they didn't submit the final bid. Kenny, you wanna take us through what you... What I'm missing here?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question on how did you decide what four contractors to invite?
I contacted the city's building department and asked them for a recommendation on four local Belleville contractors that they felt would be able to meet a project of this scope and this timeline.
Wait... Yes, ma'am?
That's not the problem, that's how you say, oh, well, I'm gonna choose you, you, and you. I mean, there should've been bids. We did wrong when we bought that bank building. We didn't know what we were getting into. You did it before the study was ever in. We didn't even know we were gonna have to be buying another building, and that's how much more money. Now this, to get this going. Did anybody know the bank wanted to buy our building? We didn't know anything about it. I mean, it's just been... No. This has just been rushed, rushed through as always. And if any of us have any sense, we're gonna say no to this, and you go and do it the proper way, advertise for the bids, and that's the way it should be done.
Okay. Now, there's been no secrets here. You're entitled to your opinion. But you understand we have a contract with the bank to vacate that building. And you all approved the contract, and you approved the purchase of the building, the sale of the building, both the sale of 213 and the purchase of 407. And I think, maybe except for one or two votes, the vote was pretty significant. I think there was at least twelve or thirteen yes votes with each of those.
Can you remind us of the date to get out of...
We're supposed to be out by... We're supposed to be out by the Fourth of August.
Wait, did we close?
We closed about three weeks ago.
July 1st or...
June 30th. June 30th, we closed.
Okay.
So, we had...
We closed about slightly over thirty days.
Slightly over thirty days. Yes, yes, yes.
So, if we knew our closing date, why didn't we have it ready to go out for bid then? We knew we were buying the building, we knew it was gonna close, we could've put the bids out. I mean, this just, it's always, oh, we gotta do this right now because it's right now.
Well...
How much work has been done, end dollar-wise, that has not all been approved?
We have done a few things, and I have explained a few of them to you, and to those who have asked me. We have, for example, they sealed the parking lot today. Hanks did pour a handicap ramp. I'm gonna give it all to you in just a second, okay?
No, see, that's just it, we're...
We just, we just put it all together today.
Well, then, you know, this should've been put together a long time ago. It's not right to us or to the citizens.
There... The staff has worked very hard. We can make this work. We... The architect, we did ask, or we talked about the scope of work, and we sought another independent person right on the beginning, based on the scope of work Kenny had presented to them. We... They came back to us that they felt that a fair price for this would be between sixty-five and sixty-seven thousand is what they was estimated to us by an independent review by an architect, okay? High architect. As you see here tonight, you got the bid from Mr... From Erlinger Construction.
There's no idea my bid...
Okay, Kenny's gonna go through it with you.
No, we should have it in front of us.
Okay. Alderman Schneider, I'm not going to... I'm not gonna disagree with you, and I've told you from the beginning, this has been a unique project. That's why we had to get quotes, and we had to move on this in a timely way because of the way the whole domino effect of everything goes. Now, there's been no... Nothing hidden here. None of these people are related to me, I don't have any... I don't have anybody, I'm pushing far. These guys came up with, along with our building inspectors, Paul Baum and Stan Erlinger, and Stan's not involved with Erlinger, this is not his company. Different group, entirely. They gave us some quotes, gave Kenny some names, I didn't even know at first who he was getting... Who he was reaching out to. And if anybody else, and there was a conversation about this, would've come forward, the biggest thing is a lot of people had told us they can't do it because of the timeline. We were in a crunch. Most of these contractors planned this work out six months, we didn't have six months. We... Once we closed on the property, and we didn't know we were gonna close until the morning of June 30th. And then, once that happened, we got into trying to get specs. And then, one of the things, we took our city inspectors through. And they came to me right after June 30th, probably the next day or so. I think we went in there on June 30th, I think it was, that day, that afternoon after we closed and did all... Our inspectors wrote up a report on each thing, okay? Now, the first thing they said to me was, we're gonna have to, we can't make everybody else, we're gonna have to make these bathrooms ADA compliant. And that's where I mentioned to you in executive session or in one of these sessions, that we would have to do this. Until the architect drew up, and he gave us a... You approved the price, but he really did scramble, until he got some drawings together and got over there and made measurements and did everything, and got with Kenny, and walked through it two different times and that, we didn't have a set of plans to go out for bid.
But you know what? We didn't have to close, the bank didn't have to say, alright, you gotta...
Well, here's the deal.
They should've worked with us on that.
Let me, let me... Okay, okay, let me... Can I explain? I worked with them.
Yeah, but just it, that's just it. It's always your way or no way at all.
And no matter what I move forward, even if it's on a timely, normal basis, there's something I still do wrong. Well, I disagree with you. Now, I will say this. This has not been a normal-time deal. Now, once we got the stuff from the architect, we all agreed in-house staff that we had to follow ADA, we can't shortcut our own stuff. But we still knew that if the bank told us this, if they don't get that building coming out of the ground in the next few weeks down the road, they won't have it under roof by the winter, and then they cannot get out of our building so we can start the police department, and that's the whole thing. The timeline is based on trying to get Bank of Belleville out of their building, out of 720, so we can remodel the police department building and make that happen. They're tentatively, in the contract, have till July 1st, I believe it is, to get out. They told us if they can get on time, and we can vacate that building on time, they believe they might, with good decent weather, they could possibly get out by May. And that would be much more suitable for us, if we could start major construction by next May. So, we're trying to make all the... You know, everything line up, and it's not been an easy... It's a domino effect. Alderman Hayden.
Yes, Your Honor, a few quick questions here. First, who is our quote-unquote "project manager"?
Kenny Vaughn.
So, Kenny?
He's our director of maintenance, and Kenny has been ramrod in this, very qualified, he is an engineer, as you know.
I didn't know, I just...
And he's the one that I have tapped to be the lead person on this particular project. Now, I told you before, and the two city attorneys and I had a conversation again the other day, that I'm gonna come back to you all soon, while the architect is busy on his four-to-five-month period of drawing plans, and he met with the police station personnel again the other day, they're working on all the different particulars. I believe that we need to get... It's separate from this thing tonight, but I'll make this statement. I believe we're gonna need to select a project manager for the next step.
Okay, that was my...
For the next step, that's major. We're talking millions...
I'm talking about the whole...
We're talking millions of dollars. This here basically is less than seventy thousand for everything we're gonna explain here tonight. And part of that is, we're gonna, by doing the ADA bathrooms, which is probably twenty-five thousand almost, Kenny?
Probably a little bit more.
Probably a little bit more. So, probably half of what we're doing is reinvesting in this building with the ADA bathrooms. So, in three years, if this council chooses to sell this building, we're going to... We're gonna see an improvement in this building, because right now, one of the reasons I could negotiate... We negotiated that lady down was because the bathrooms weren't ADA.
I mean, we got this site, we're vacating our site, we got the site here, and then we got the site on West Main. So, we got four different sites, and somebody's gonna have to... I mean, that's four balls.
That's why it was imperative, Alderman Hayden, and I tried to explain this, this was not hidden to this council. This one moving into 407 really is the pin that... Or the cog that keeps this thing going, the wheel going. If we don't get out of 213 and get moving in here, even though it's not been a perfect scenario, it's going to throw a wrench in the whole operations. Now, I'm sorry about that, but that's just reality. We got a lot of moving parts.
So, this is what caused the reason we gotta do the meeting tonight versus we could not...
Absolutely. I tried to have this the other day, but the architect couldn't get the plans ready. We didn't even get him approved. I mean, actually, the guy started working on them in good faith before we actually even got... But they weren't done. They weren't, you know, he just didn't have them. And they had to do the drawings for the bathrooms, and they're changing that... And when you come in, if you've ever been in this building, and you're welcome to go in, if you get with Kenny, he'll take you through, you just have to go through less than four of you, no more than three of you at a time, I would recommend, so we don't violate the Open Meetings Act. But if you want a tour of this, you can get ahold of Kenny. But here's the deal. We're taking down... We're taking down a wall to make a counter for the housing, and we're putting in some, for the lack of a better word, safety glass, so that the girls have an area there, that there's some protection, they're gonna have an area they can, like the banks, you can put stuff under, but, you know, that they can't crawl over the counter at them. Housing sometimes gets a little bit exciting down there, and the police officers are not always in there, and Bobby's not always in there. Sometimes, I'm not advertising this to the world, but sometimes it's just the girls in the building. And so, we wanted to make it safe, so we put up this area where there's gonna be, you know, reconstruct this one wall.
Do you have any idea what portion of cost that is?
Well, that really is... Kenny, I would say that's probably...
I would think the modifications to accommodate housing facilities is probably half the cost, and the other half of this is for the ADA bathrooms.
Yeah, 'cause really, truthfully, a lot of this stuff, our maintenance people are doing. They're scrubbing the carpets, they're touching up a little paint, they're doing stuff like that.
Well, let me tell you my thought. I appreciate the safety factor, I appreciate that you are looking out for our employees, but we know going in that this is a temporary home for them.
But three years, probably, Melina. In three years, you...
I get that. Why aren't we doing it for the clerk and the treasurer?
Well, when we do the modifications here, and we start getting the architect to look at City Hall...
We're talking years down the road.
Well, we're talking two more years, probably, but, you know, this building has been ours this way for fifty-some years. And, you know, I'm not the only mayor that hasn't acted... We've made a few improvements in here, but... And we just, you know, put some additional cameras, et cetera. But like I said, this one that we're taking on right now, and we're, in a sense, we gotta treat ourselves like we would any other business, that there's some things we had to do. We covered them. I think we're pretty well... We're not trying to go crazy, we're not trying to make this into a Cadillac, but we're trying to make sure we meet safety standards and that we... And that's why, what we're presenting here tonight. Alderman Schneider?
Yes, it's just a temporary. They don't need the glass and all that, because that's a waste of money. These clerks here don't have it.
Well, I think they need to get it.
Well, because it's a temporary building, we're not even gonna keep that building, and we're sticking all this money in it.
Well, we don't believe...
And my question is, why did we not get ahold of the bank and find out from them? They knew they were gonna lose their lease, where did you wanna go? So, before we set our closing dates and all that, you could've set our closing date on the bank...
Let me repeat something. The bank had options to stay a lot longer, if you remember. They worked with us to get out of that lease earlier, you know? And that was one of the reasons, they worked with us, 'cause they had options to continue. So, when we presented that, I think Mr. Harner made that very clear, that the way we had it set up, this would satisfy the bank, and that... 'Cause their big thing was when they... And I'll be honest with you, they told me they were working on four different sites. I didn't know until just days before we came into this next... This council meeting, when we approved that, that that was the site they chose for absolute certain. Yes, sir?
Yeah, okay. The other entities in businesses in there, when are they gonna be moved out? Are they moved out?
Where at?
In the building that we're buying?
The only other one that's still left is a group of attorneys, and their contract runs out in October. And Garrett's already given them notice that we won't... We don't have any reason really to extend it past then. But once again, we're getting rent from them right now, which helps pays for some of the utilities, and they're just operating as normal. So, their contract, I believe, expires the end of October of this year, and it's our intention that they know that they're looking right now.
Are we taking over that lease? You know, the question is, you know, are other people in there to liability of...
Well, as the...
We're gonna be moving some sensitive files, obviously, into that building.
Oh, no, no, this building that we bought here, I thought you meant... I'm sorry, Joe.
No, I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking about 720.
No, 407.
407, the lady...
Last time we had some boxes or stuff...
Okay, the last time we talked about her staying in the basement with some files. What... Apparently, they're already unloading the files, right, Bob? Or do you know? Kenny?
They've probably eliminated probably half the files.
They're getting out now. What happened was, they originally, you know, the woman, as we told you, had some issues.
I know all about that.
But the files that she have, all those records she has, they have since our meeting, several weeks ago meeting, sold that all, and they're already unloading them right now and hauling them out. So, that need for her to stay a little bit longer is basically not going to exist.
Now, on this... The bids we got before is, Mayor, obviously, it's above ten thousand, our ordinance is twenty thousand.
We're gonna have to ask in this motion to waive the bidding procedure, even though Kenny did everything. We treated it like a bid, but we... Because we didn't have the three to four weeks to advertise, he contacted local people. We contacted some local people from the Belleville or Belleville area to see if they were interested. And that's what we did here, and that's why we need formally in the motion to approve this tonight, we would ask... The motion I would ask for is to include waiving the bid procedures and approving this contract.
Can that be done with a simple majority?
Yes.
And this proposal we had before is, it may need to be redirected back to Mr. Vaughn. Is this all that we're anticipating as far as retrofitting?
Well, if you see in the thing that you got, the packet, on the top, you got the proposal from Erlinger. Erlinger's total. Now, this is what we're asking for tonight, and Kenny, it's those two prices totaled together, right?
Sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And while I'm not gonna promise you, that could be slightly, a little bit less.
We're thinking that we might be able to get that reduced somewhat.
And there's, you know, there's a couple things in that contract that we've already had some, even since late this afternoon, had some conversations with Erlinger, that that might get knocked down a little bit. The next stuff you saw...
One quick question, on alternatives, number one, do not bid. Why was that?
That was a decision we made, that was for bulletproof glass, and we just went with half-inch polycarbonate glass across the front window.
Okay. Which was a lot cheaper?
Yeah, that was probably twenty percent of the cost of a bulletproof.
Okay. Okay, these other invoices is to show you, we did... And when doing this, you know, first of all, I talked to Jamie today. She's at home, as you know, still in her maternity leave, but we talked about this. As I told all of you before, because this is not in a TIF, this money is going to come out of the general fund, and it'll be out of our reserves. Now, I view this as basically a one-time expense. We're not going to... You know, if we would choose to keep this building down the road, you know, whether or not then, you'd include it into a TIF, and there already had been some conversation about that neighborhood over there, a little bit around Kerner House, et cetera, that's a future conversation. But if you would ever take in the Kerner House into an existing TIF or create a TIF, you'd certainly probably include this building if we were gonna end up down the road, keep the building, or even the parking lot, and sell the building, but not all the parking lot. There's options we have, as we talked about. On the back of the building was a faded canopy, awning. We replaced it, if you noticed out there, there's a new blue one that says City of Belleville, and we did that just so there was some identity on the back of the building, 'cause that's gonna be the main entrance, because it's handicap accessible. So, that was a three hundred and seventy dollar invoice from Zukarski.
Okay. Did anybody else?
There's not many... Oh, I'm not sorry, Zukarski was not the...
That was Travi for the awning.
That was Travi. Travi was the awning, I'm sorry. That's back here a little further. Zukarski, we tried to stick to a Belleville sign company, we tried to do as much as we could in Belleville, first of all, okay? The other thing we stuck with, Travi was the only one that we could find around here that would give us a quote Kenny had called around. So, Travi was the awning, and that Kenny was seven twenty-five. Going back to Zukarski, we went to Zukarski because years ago, when we did signs, we had Hammond. As you know, Denny Hammond died. When he died and we did 510, we called around, we did some stuff at that time, we weren't under the same pressure, I don't have it all in front of me, that file, but we ended up going to Zukarski, who made the sign at 510, which is out there in the front. We went to Zukarski now, I asked for a price on this, because basically, we're duplicating that same sign, the same, what they did before, and we're making two four-by-four signs that will be a little bit of an angle so that it can be noticed from Mascota Avenue and Washington Street, so that people can see, identify the building, okay? And they came into the... Three hundred and seventy dollars was that for the signs. And they... But part of it was, because he already had the design, he didn't have to totally recreate the wheel, he had it, you know, the same thing, we told him exactly what we wanted, here was the sign you did for us before, and so that's how that came about, and we just repeated what we had before.
Okay, and you know, I know that sounds reasonable, but honestly, if we owned the design and it was just a file...
Who else did you... Who else? There's who else in town makes them like that?
Makes these kind of signs?
Right here in town that does that? I mean, Hammond's out, he was right outside of town, Zukarski's in.
I'll look it up from a guy, I wanna say on South Sixteen, there's a company out on Lebanon that does it.
Okay. Okay.
It's just over and over throughout this package, we're seeing one company, one company, one company, and it's frustrating.
Well, it's... This one here...
I know this one fell under the ten thousand.
It falls under the ten thousand, and... Well, they both do. It falls under the ten thousand, and, well, they both do, and they are people we've dealt with, you know, the sign, we had success before, and like I said, the other one here, Rich can explain, it was eight hundred dollars, and he had one, he had one bid, or one quote for forty-seven hundred, wasn't it, Rich?
Hey, I also got two verbals. Also got two verbals from two companies that were working on the tower, putting in the sprint equipment, and I think theirs was twenty-five hundred and around three thousand is what they estimated, those were all in verbal, but they're kinda...
This one here came in at eight hundred dollars, Rich said that was a great deal, obviously, and they're the ones that are gonna line up and...
Yeah, basically, we're taking the camera that's pointing to housing, they'll be pointing to the building.
So that the micro...
Well, you don't have anybody that can do that? Or is this something you have to have equipment to line it up?
Well...
Actually, go all the way up to the top.
Somebody has to climb that tower up to the top. And, and, yes, ma'am.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we waive the bidding process and approve necessary recommendations at 407 East Lincoln, as recommended by staff.
Okay, and, and, okay, we have a motion and we have a second, I would just wanna make sure that you got all the facts in front of you. There's the, the price with the, with the, moving the, so we get the computers hooked up. Rich has already got the information done. Rich, they give us a quote to move Windstream, or, nothing, so they're moving that. We called Watts Copy, Watts Copies, since we got a new contract with them, and they got all our copies, copiers, they're gonna move everything free of charge. So, we got that accomplished, which was a, which I figured we were gonna spend some money on moving copiers and stuff, because you don't wanna try to do that yourself, and, you know, not set them up right. So, they're gonna do all that free of charge. And then Hank's, who had the, the current contract with the city, was the low bid for the sidewalk program, right, Tim?
Yes.
They did come in and, and got the handicap ramp poured in the back. And, Tim, that came to one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents?
Yes.
So, that was the cost of that, and, and there's two ways we can look at that, we could take it out of the proposed MFT, you know, sidewalk project, or we could just run it out of the, Jamie can take it out of there, however you so desire that when it comes to finance. The seal code of the lot, sealing the lot was three thousand seven hundred dollars, you got about, what, three quotes, how many, we got three or four quotes? Two, we tried to, we got three, two?
We tried to get three quotes, we only got two.
Sonnenberg and this one, right?
Yeah.
Were the only two that came through. This was thirty-seven hundred dollars, and then, it was an additional five hundred and twenty-five dollars to stripe the lot, which they'll do in the next day or so. So, that was the, the one you have in front of you. And then, the last thing was tailor roofing, we had a leak in the one corner, yeah, down the road someday, this roof is gonna need to be redone.
Oh, my God.
We, we said that, Lillian, I, I'll bet you, it should be somewhere on the tape, that was not a secret, it's not a new roof, but we said we can patch it, and we patched it for thirteen hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents. So, you know, this is what we have on expenses, the whole thing total is slightly under, right at seventy thousand dollars for everything, right, Kenny? And, and it is, like I said, we view as, unless we choose to keep the building down the road, it's a one-time expense, and hopefully, we can, the market's going back up a little bit, and with moving them, making them ADA bathrooms, we feel like we shouldn't get anything less than what we paid for it, and hopefully, a little bit more, and help recoup some of that.
But again, Mayor, barring any other unforeseen things, this is pretty much all we have to do, cost-wise, direct-to-finance.
In talking to the staff at a special meeting today with my department heads, this was, this was everything that we felt it was gonna be necessary to make this happen. And like I said, we're, we're doing, you know, I will tell you, okay, I'm not gonna, let's be honest, you know, Kenny might have to have a little bit of overtime this weekend when we do the move with some of the maintenance people, but that's in his budget, for the most part, his manpower, and we feel like we can get that accomplished, but he's gonna have to have. To get them to move in this weekend, where we can open up Monday morning and not delay any services, is gonna be a lot of hard work this weekend for a lot of us, but I think we can get it done, and, you know, it'll be a couple hectic days over there, bear with us, but I think they'll be up and operating quickly, they'll, they'll get by Monday morning, even though it'll be crazy. We hopefully can get Tim's office, maybe start to move some stuff on Friday already, they can start the move on, with his office, and Erlinger did tell Kenny, if, if they get this approved tonight, they will, you know, possibly start with demolition, or start with things already as soon as tomorrow, and they'll get it done. I, originally, what we thought, what might have to be done is, do the, the wall and some of that initial stuff for housing, and then come back and do the bathrooms after we were in there, and we were kinda prepared to deal with that, even though that wasn't a perfect scenario, once you're working, to start having that demolition and all that stuff, and they, they came back with the bid and said they can get it done in this week, if they can start immediately. It's really the best way to go, because then the dirt and the dust and everybody will be, they'll be done, and then Kenny can finish cleaning the carpets in the back of the building there then afterwards, and, you know, everything can be, you know, we can still, it's gonna be a very, very hectic week, and, and it's gonna be mind-boggling to get this accomplished, but anytime you move two, two of your departments, it's not easy, and you could plan for months and still have things come up that aren't the perfect scenario. It's not, you know, to pick up two operations, engineering and housing, is not easy to do. But I think we've got a plan, I think now, for the first time, we've got a pretty good total dollar price where we're at, and, you know, I, it's not, it's not on a line of where I thought we'd be at, it's pretty much in the ballpark of where we thought we'd be all along, because none of this stuff, you know, nothing's free. And you, and we have to have, like I said, of the seventy thousand, you can see, these little things add up, but when you put in the handicap ramp, and you sealed the lot, and you striped the lot, so we have handicap parking and all that stuff, that all costs money, just to follow our own codes. The big thing here is about twenty-five thousand of it, at least, is the handicap bathrooms. That's almost half of where we're at, is the ADA bathrooms. So, is there, is there any other questions? We do have a motion, and the motion that you guys, I would just say, Ken, did you run the final tape? I think Aaron did it, I don't think I walked off and grabbed it.
No, I didn't.
The, I believe when we totaled everything, it came to right at seventy thousand, but, but I guess what we'd say in the motion is to approve the Erlinger, you know, the Erlinger proposal, and you had a quote, you had a price on that, Kenny, at sixty thousand, what was the total?
Sixty thousand nine forty point eighty-nine.
Sixty thousand nine forty, I just didn't add these two up, sixty thousand nine forty point eighty-nine?
Yes, sir.
The bid says fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah, and number two for accelerated schedule, to get this in by eight AM next month, eight, August the fourth, if you have hit twenty-nine seventy-four fifteen.
And then, the additional things, Alderman Schmidt, and who made the second, Alderman Consilla, would be that you all understand, these additional invoices that I provided for you, totaled up, I believe, did you total them there?
Seventy thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars, sixty-four cents.
So, seventy thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-four cents, sixty-four cents. Alderman Schmidt and Consilla, if you'll accept that as the maximum, because like I said, a lot of the stuff is, well, this is all very specific, the rest of this is all exact dollars. If you accept it as your maximum in the bid, then I think the motion covers everything. So, we have a motion and a second, to approve Erlinger Construction at sixty thousand nine forty eighty-nine, but the total of all these additional invoices, as explained here this evening, for work necessary to make the, make the move of Health and Housing to 407 East Lincoln, would be seventy thousand one thirty-two sixty-four.
Yeah, one question, I didn't see this as a price, but, one from Zukarski for two-by-two polymetal one-ten, for that?
That was in, that's part of the, that's part of the three, the three seventy, the first.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, 'cause there was another sign, we had another sign that we also got, and then the post, we had the post there too, there's another, that was, three seventy, isn't that the total, three seventy?
That's the invoice that I got. Three seventy was for the two four-by-four signs.
And the post and that with it, everything.
We need to add to that one-ten plus forty-eight. The one-ten was for the two-by-two signs, the forty-eight was for the sign we talked about, on a pole, out in the front.
So, there was, this additional one-ten needs to be added to that, too.
And just forty-eight dollars with stake? Yeah, that's, that's, that's the four sign. The two four-by-four signs was three seventy, plus the one-ten for the two-by-two sign, plus the yard sign was forty-eight dollars.
So, we had to add another, to this, to this motion, then we add another one? So, okay, so the grand total then should be seventy thousand two ninety sixty-four. Is, will you accept that in your motion?
Yes.
As the grand total?
Should this not have all been added up before we got to the meeting? We had a total to see what we're...
Alderman Schneider, I, I, once again, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you you're wrong, but if I would've, if we all would've done nothing else today but this only, yeah, it could be in perfect fashion, but everybody, and besides doing all these things today, did their regular jobs, too. I had many meetings, and many different pieces of business for the city had to carry on today. I apologize. We, and Alderman Hayden is right, in a perfect world, we'd have had a business, a, a, a project manager for this, and they'd have came in and laid it all out for us, but in this particular project, because it's smaller, and because we're trying to save dollars, we're being our own project manager on these couple moves, and it is a little cumbersome, and it is a little timely with everything else going on. I also apologize, I was out of town on Friday for some meetings, and, and all you gotta do is miss one day here, and you're about three days behind. So, I apologize for anything that may, you know, I guarantee you, you're right, that we can always do better, and this was not the perfect scenario, but I explained that from the get-go, that this was gonna be unique, moving these buildings, and that we were gonna have to work together and be a little bit understanding, and that we were gonna have to waive and probably get quotes and et cetera. That was not a secret, so that shouldn't come as a total surprise to anybody. So, right now, we have a motion and we have a second, to approve this tonight, as just stated, and at the total amount of seventy thousand two ninety sixty-four. If there's no further questions, I'll call for the roll call vote. Heisler.
Aye.
Holt.
Due to the great many inconsistencies in this process, I'm voting no.
Schmidt.
Aye, but did you skip Ken?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Consilla. I crossed you out of my list, I apologize. Consilla.
Aye.